We'll now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on June 3, 2025 to order at 3:04 PM. Welcome to the work session of the Waco City Council. Welcome to all the people here in the Boski Theater Gallery. Thank you all for being here today. Good crowd. Appreciate y'all coming down on this beautiful spring afternoon. Welcome to all the viewers at home watching on TV on the Waco City Cable Channel, and thank you all for being here and joining us. I'm Mayor Holmes. I'm joined on the dice today here by our council members, District 1 Isabel Lozano, District 3 Josh Borderood, Darius Ewing is on his way. He'll be here in a couple minutes. George Chase from District 5 and illustrious Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield next to me here. I also want to recognize City Manager Bradley Ford and the staff here, City Attorney Kristen Hamilton-Cam, and sitting in for our City Secretary Michelle Hicks today is Mandy Spikes, Acting City Secretary. So you've got the whole group here today. We're going to start the meeting today with a moment of silence. We now get the meeting started. We start out with the work session speakers, and we can welcome Darius Ewing, our council member Ewing, just showed up, so we've got a full house up here. Recognition of work session speakers. Is there anyone present who'd like to speak on a work session agenda item this afternoon? Seeing no requests to speak, we will now move to recess the, we will now recess the regular session and convene into work session. We're going to start that out with a report from City Manager Ford. City Manager Ford?
Thanks, Mayor, and welcome to our meeting this afternoon. We've got no changes on the agenda today, and I'm going to be pretty brief in my comments because we've got a couple of really, three really good work session presentations for you, and I expect they're going to take a little while. So I'm going to be brief on my report, but I do have a few employee recognition items that I think are important. First, we've got a new landfill manager that we've hired, Alfonso Garcia. I think he's here. Yeah, Alfonso, thank you. Alfonso comes to us with 14 years of experience from, I guess, a great place to recruit people from, city of El Paso. Including the last 11 years, he's worked at their landfill. He is a Coast Guard veteran and brings a deep knowledge of solid waste operations along with strong commitment to public service. We're super excited to have him, and we're so excited that we built him a brand-new landfill to operate. So, Alfonso, welcome and looking forward to working with you.
Could we not get the rights for Steely Dan's dirty work to play as we introduce Alfonso, or was that a timing issue?
You know, I mean, I guess it was an issue, a budget cut.
Welcome, Alfonso. I appreciate it. Your timing is great, too. We just built a brand-new one, and so you're coming in at exactly the right time. Anything else?
I've got a couple more.
Great.
We have some of our very talented team members here today that have been recognized nationally for their work, and I'll start with our marketing and communications department. They were actually recently awarded six Telly Awards for their video productions. You see them hanging out at the fountain there. Y'all are going to have to stand up, you know? I know, I know. This team, as council knows, and I think the public's seen enough work now that they know, just sets a really high standard for excellence in our communications. Super proud of their work. I'm really glad to see it be recognized out in the world because this is not just an award program for local government. This is competing against folks in the private sector as well. So we're being recognized here for work across 12,000 entries from all 50 states, six continents, from the top advertising agencies in the world, television stations, production houses, and our team coming home with six awards. I'm just real proud of it. Some of the awards the council will recognize for our programs like Waddle to Waco, for the Penguin Shores exhibit promotion, also On the Job, A Day at the Waco Animal Shelter, Lost Pets Waco, Men in Black, that was a highlight, obviously. It did only win bronze. I don't know how that's possible. I didn't get a gold.
It was for the Best Director, is that right?
Yeah, Kyle back there.
Kyle, I think you deserve gold.
He deserves gold. One of the unfortunate realities for Kyle is he has to work with the available talent that we have. And not in the Men in Black thing was, the Men in Black was top-level talent, but he knows what I'm saying because you put me in front of a camera and I go blank.
I think if you can make Councilmember Ewing and I look good, I mean, you deserve them definitely top awards for that.
Yeah, but a great team and really proud of what they do and how they do it, and I know the council's really proud of y'all as well. So, thank you, team. The next group, Small But Mighty, that's what we like to say. Where are we, Millet? Over there, yeah. We also have some really great recognition for our neighborhood engagement team. Represented Waco at the 50th Annual Neighborhoods USA Conference in Florida recently, just a couple of weeks ago, and brought home multiple awards. First place for Neighborhood of the Year for Multi-Neighborhood Partnerships, first place in the country, as well as first place for our weekly newsletter. The department also earned third place for Best Neighborhood Program for Physical Revitalization. Our team members, y'all, will y'all stand? Yeah, come on. So, Millet Harrison, our director, as well as Crystal Anthony and Marissa Zaniga, they have really put some legs to this work. And y'all see them all the time at your neighborhood meetings out in the community, but it's really nice to see Waco's program get recognized because I do think it is definitely setting a great standard across the country. So congratulations, Millet, to your team. Appreciate the work.
I'll just echo that, too. I know that that was a really intentional initiative five, six years ago when we said, you know, we really got to invigorate this and activate it, and Millet, you stepped up, and I think we had 20-plus different neighborhood associations that were meeting on a regular basis and really well-informed and great dialogue at those neighborhood association meetings, and we didn't have that engagement before. I think we kind of had it, but you really activated, you and your team. So I've seen the benefits of it, and it's been great for the city.
Thanks, Mayor. Our last recognition, I want to highlight a little different team member, a four-legged team member. If you didn't see the news, Andor, one of our K-9 officers with Waco Police Department, yeah, there he is, left and right, the right picture will make more sense in a minute, but Andor's been working with Waco PD and his handler, Officer Butcher, for about eight years. Last week while working, a domestic disturbance, Andor was shot three times by a suspect who was taken into custody, and due to the severity of his injuries, was actually care flighted over to Texas A&amp;M's University Veterinary Center and provided life-saving care form. We're glad to report that Andor has a real strong prognosis for recovery, but due to the nature of his injuries to his shoulder in particular, he'll will be forced into retirement and will be headed home to live with Officer Butcher and his family, obviously. So the K-9s and PD are obviously true members of our team. Really appreciative of his handler as well as Andor for the dedication and excellence, and we'll miss him, but glad that he survived and we had him into retirement well-earned. All right, we've got one informal report on your agenda today. It's IR 371, provides an update on Creekside Community Village Project, particularly following the recent announcement of the termination of the large EPA Community Change Grant Award, the termination of that. Wanted to provide an update of the council on it. Mission Waco is moving forward on Phase 1 of the development, anticipated to be completed later in the next couple of months. There are portions of the project, including commercial buildings in Phase 1, as well as transportation functions, that will be delayed due to the loss of the grant funding. More information provided in the report today as well.
On that one, just good news, bad news. I think the good news, the community's already bought into this for the unhoused and the homeless, and I think it's a great project that Mission Waco's leading. Bad news is the termination of that large material federal grant, particularly in the context of this project. So we're going to have to figure out, as you say, that we're going forward, or Mission Waco's going forward and the Creekside Development's going forward. So, well, I'll stay tuned, I guess, as this thing moves along.
I'll just add, if you have been following this process with Creekside and are in support of Mission Waco, and you've been waiting for the right time to make a financial contribution to your efforts, never a better time than right now. So, thank you in advance for all that are watching and listening that are probably going to go give money now.
Mayor and council, we do have eight public hearings on our agenda tonight. Laura Wagstaff, our Assistant Director of Development Services, will be covering those likely in the business session later. If we end up with time in the work session, we'll bring her forward, but likely we'll cover those in the business session. And then we have 25 resolutions on your agenda, and as I mentioned earlier, not going to highlight any of those particularly, but I'll take any questions that you might have about resolutions at this time.
Any questions for City Manager Ford on these resolutions? There are a couple of real estate acquisitions in here that I think will benefit the city long-term from an efficiency standpoint, a vision standpoint, and I think they're well-thought-through. What else did I have here? In, I guess, in the interest of, because we have three great presentations, I won't go into depth on anything else, but anything else, Bradley? Or anything else, guys, here? Questions for staff?
Yeah, just a brief comment. I believe it's in the consent agenda for our resolutions, but just a note of gratitude for Councilmember Ewing, City Manager Ford, Deputy City Manager Deidra Emerson, Assistant City Manager Lisa Blackman, and Parks Director Jonathan Cook on the negotiations and creativity and working towards acquiring a lot in Austin Avenue. Looking forward to that being operationalized as a park in the coming fiscal year, which I think is a really exciting thing for the Austin Avenue neighborhood that Councilmember Ewing and I share. So I really appreciate the work of Councilmember Ewing taking a big lead on that and all of the city staff that kind of got that across the line, and of course, our friends at Pine Wood and the owners of that lot.
Thanks, Councilmember Border. The only person I'd say that we would add to that list is my partner in crime over here to the left in legal. They really jumped as we needed to jump quickly to ensure that the property got acquired. So appreciate this board of legal, too.
Thank you.
I'm good. If y'all are ready, I'm ready.
Very full agenda today. Okay, with the completion of the review of the business session, we'll now move to the consent agenda that consent agenda includes Resolution 2025-387 through Resolution 2025-411, including Resolution 2025-389. In that particular resolution, we had four council members that filed ASIs, and under Texas Local Government Code 171.004C, a majority of the members have filed. Therefore, no members are required to abstain, and all council members may vote on that item. Are there any other items that council would like to remove from the consent agenda? There being none, we will move to, the next item on the agenda is work session. The items 2025-372 through 2025-375. City Manager Ford, would you please introduce the first work session?
Yes, sir. We've got Work Session 372 is our discussion of the fiscal year 25, '26, operating and capital improvements program budget development, including past, present, and future aspects of the CIP and operating budget. Blue Coslet's our ACM CFO is coming up, as well as Colin Booth, our Managing Director of Finance, now going to present on where we're at relative to the 25, '26 budget development. Comprehensive look at our major funds, our revenues, expenses, and budgetary impacts. Also, this presentation's really meant to set the stage for Friday's annual council retreat that we're holding, and hopefully it'll lay some great groundwork for that discussion as we seek your direction and feedback. So I'll turn it over to Blue.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor and council, good to be with you. Got a lot of exciting information for you today, and this is going to really set the stage for Friday's discussion. Our objective here today, like City Manager Ford said, was to provide you some essential background information and really a lot of context around what we are experiencing and how we're going about putting this fiscal year '26 budget together based upon some of the factors going on in our economy within our city. So really setting the stage so that, you know, you can be engaged on Friday and help us through some informed decision-making. But really, today, Mayor and council going over some major revenue sources, diversions, those expense categories. We're going to get into a little bit of the compensation history, TMRS overview, and look at our historical utility bills, and then legislative and grant updates. Colin and I are going to go back and forth and kind of team up on this presentation. So I'm going to turn it over and let Colin go over this first portion.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. We're going to dive into general fund revenues, and we're going to start with our major revenue sources. As you can see on the graph on the left, you can see the general fund history for the last five years, including fiscal '25, our current year, our revenues for the general fund broken down by major categories. And as you can see, a large majority of our categories, there are property taxes and sales taxes, and you can see the trend in each of the categories as they have grown over time, or some of the categories have increased or decreased over the years as well. On the right-hand side, you can see the pie chart there that is the forecast for fiscal year 2025. And again, just reiterating how much of our general fund is dependent upon our property taxes and our sales taxes, property taxes being 43.3% of our FY '25 forecast through the end of the year, and sales taxes being about 29%. When you add those two together, it's 72.2%. Again, that's the lion's share of our revenue for our general fund, and then you can see that's about 27.8%, which are non-property tax or sales tax revenue sources. That's our money that we've got coming in for our cost allocation from other funds, our pilot, that stands for payment in lieu of taxes, and gross receipts, and we've got franchise fees, interest, and then our other category, which is going to include intergovernmental revenue, fines and fees, and building permits. If you look at Slide 5, we wanted to kind of take a dive here and talk about revenue diversion. So as you know, TIF stands for Tax Increment Funds. These are property tax revenues that are diverted from the general fund and the property tax INS fund or our Geo Debt Service Fund and diverted over into our TIF funds. And so we've got two main ones, TIF 1 and TIF 4. You can see on the right at the top, it's our actual contributions from fiscal '21 to fiscal '25, and you can see how those have grown over time. So, TIF 1 is $26,266,395 that's been diverted over into the TIF funds, and about $4.7 million into the TIF 4 fund. And again, that totals $31,319,000 of those property taxes that have been diverted over there. If you look at the planning estimates on both of these funds, we do multi-year plans for them, and look at our revenues and our expenses, you can see the snapshot in time at five-year increments, so that's not a cumulative number. We just wanted to show a snapshot in each of those years. So you've got $16,746,999 for the snapshot for FY '30, grows up to $22.845 million in fiscal '35, grows to 20, or goes down a little bit, excuse me, it grows to $28.454 million in fiscal '40, then to $35 million in fiscal '45, and then to $42.977 million in fiscal '50. And so when you look at that projection over the 25 years, that ends up being $657 million that's been diverted of property tax revenues based on that increment over into those funds. And that is money that obviously is used for the purposes for the TIF funds, but could be, could have been used to offset property tax revenues in our general fund and our Geo Debt Service Fund for those services and that debt to support our general government position.
Kyle, just one quick question on that. First of all, an observation about how quickly TIF 4 ramps up, you know? For it to, I know it took 20 years for 1 to, for TIF 1 to get to kind of a material amount. We're showing TIF 4 to be, you know, almost $8 million in four, three or four years. So that's great. As we, as these sort of get captured apart from the general, I'm trying to remember the flexibility of putting that back in, that takes a council vote, or is that locked in for a period of time?
It is, it is not locked in for any period of time right now. There is a portion of it, like in TIF 4, I think that's a 70%. So only 70% of it goes into TIF 4 at this point, so 30% comes in. That would take a vote of the council to change that.
Okay, and that's, you could look at that every year?
We could, yes, as it comes up.
We do have some debt service in each of the funds, TIF 1 and TIF 4, but one of the things we're showing here is the revenue into those funds is going to be much greater than the debt service required for like the pavilion parking garage or the other things we funded. So at some point down the road, it's worthy of a discussion of would you rather divert into TIF districts all that money, or would you like to ramp up your CIP, or there's some other operational need that you want to address? And the good news is, there's a lot of money that's going to be there. So we'll give the council flexibility to make some decisions, and you can do that a number of ways. You can change your contribution rates. So like TIF 1, we're contributing currently 100%. And Blue mentioned in TIF 4, we're contributing 70. You can modify that. And there's also some other things you can do. You can set a maximum contribution dollar you would put in, and anything over that would go to the general fund. So we're starting to have this conversation with you because it's a pretty sizable amount of money, especially if you have a long view. If you look out in the 2030s and 2040s, these are dollars that you might, say, want to put into a large neighborhood street program or some other council priority, and ultimately y'all's decision, but want to start having that dialogue.
Because there's a few more restrictions around TIF, what you can use that for, right? So we could, all right, we have a good, great flexibility there.
Great, we do have some flexibility on that, yes. All right, Mayor and council, we're going to turn to another source of revenue, revenue diversion, and that's our outside agency contributions. And we have talked at length on the outside agency contributions that we do within the city, but we wanted to put some numbers behind that because that is another source where we are looking to start scaling back. I mean, as we kind of broadcast last year that we were going to start planning on the discretionary side, a five-year scale back, 20% per year. So that discretionary is up at top, and you can see that has grown from fiscal year '21 at almost 1.4 million up to 1.9 in fiscal year '24, and then back down to 1.8 in this current year, 1.8 million. There are some agencies that we fund here, McLennan County for the taxes, McLennan County Appraisal District for their work on the appraisals. Those are not really discretionary. Those come every single year. And then we have some non-general fund agencies that we fund, such as Keep Waco Beautiful and the Pid1 City Center Waco contribution. So those are, those are outside of the general fund. And then we do have some regional agency contracts, the WEMEC, Waco Family Medicine, and our contribution, contractual contribution to TSDT's Training Center. So all in all, from fiscal year '21, in all funding sources, we've grown from almost $6 million in contributions up to, up to $10.1, $10.2 million. So we wanted to look at that, especially on the, as we're looking at the general fund and what the impact of that is. So general fund contributions as a percent of our total general fund budget. You can see from what's coming out on that green line on the left, from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '25, we started at $5.6 million, we're up to $8.5, $8.6 million. And what that amounts to is 3% to 4% of our total general fund budget going towards the outside agency contributions. Doesn't seem like a whole lot, but if you take this into account and put this on really a cent on the tax rate, you're looking at anywhere from a 4.8 to 5.3 cents of your tax rate going to outside agencies. And that's on the right-hand side. So as a percentage of your M&amp;O tax rate, you're looking at 7% to 8.75% of your M&amp;O tax rate going towards outside agency funding. So as I mentioned earlier, on the left, you see our current allocations for the discretionary. On the right, that's our five-year plan, the level phase-out for those outside agency fundings. And I do want to mention, in fiscal year '26, you are going to see two changes in our budget. First, Creative Waco, we are going to pull that one out of the general fund. This fits very much in line with what is statutorily available for use of our HOT funds, Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds. We think that's a, that's a very fitting portion of our funding to go towards Creative Waco. So we are going to move that out into its own HOT fund and fund Creative Waco through that. And the Greater Waco Chamber, our contribution is going to come through the WEMEC funding. So two changes that you will see on that. But like I said, from fiscal year '25 down to fiscal year '30, we are looking to phase out our discretionary outside agency funding.
All of the chambers funds are coming from WEMEC?
That is correct. This, the 336 that was in fiscal year '25.
I'll just add to that one, the previous one.
Yes.
We're not binding future councils to this. There's a sort of a model that we're looking at, and we look at this every year. I think we're taking a, you know, a little bit closer look at it this year, and in future slides, we'll kind of, I think, demonstrate why we're taking a...
We are, absolutely, Mayor. This is our plan, but again, this comes to council every single year for approval. So the five-year plan is not being set and established by council, but this is the direction that we are proposing to this council to go.
Yep.
All right, Mayor and council, we did, we did a lot of legwork on this. This is not really information that's just readily available, but we did have a lot of, our team go through a lot of open records requests to a lot of peer cities. These are the cities that we got back so that we could find out who was funding at what levels. And as we looked and started comparing each city to one another, there are notable differences in the size of budgets and what the services between these cities are. So the most appropriate comparison that we could get was a dollar per capita. And on a dollar-per-capita basis, the city of Waco is contributing $22.56 to outside agency funding. If you look at these peer cities that we got information back from, that averages is $10 less at $12.50. So Waco is on the top end of what we contribute towards outside agencies.
Continuing on with our revenue diversions or really even limitations with our property tax, this slide looks at our property tax exemptions and how those have grown over time relative to our assessed valuation, and then it turns into our net taxable value when you take out those exemptions. And those exemptions are the state-mandated exemptions, the local exemptions that we've got here at the city of Waco, and then things like appraisal use losses and those types of valuation losses. So when you look at the trend over time, you can see that the assessed value is the dark blue color, and then you can see how that has grown over time. And then the red is the amount that's been taken out for those exemptions and those caps. So you can see that as our assessed valuation has grown over time, you can also see the growth of those exemptions and caps over time as well. So when you look at fiscal year '25, we've got $23.18 billion of assessed valuation, $6.72 billion has been taken out for those exemptions and caps to get us to a net taxable value of $16.46 billion. So you can see how each of these different categories has grown over time.
Are these property tax exemptions, both our local exemptions and statewide exemptions combined, essentially all exemptions are taken into account?
Yes, sir. That's all.
Thanks.
And diving in more to that point and to that question, you can see our exemptions that include the state portion and the local portion, the local being the dark blue color, the state portion being the light blue color. And then it shows the trend in the green as the exemptions as a percentage of assessed valuation. And you can see that we kind of started at 25.9%, and then it kind of goes down to 24.1%, and then it jumps. And what happened between fiscal '22 and fiscal '23 was that the city had adopted an increased tax exemption for the over 65 that increased from $5,000 to $50,000. That homestead exemption increased from 10% to 15%, and then there was also a $50,000 exemption for... And then there was also a $50,000 exemption for our disabled citizens as well during that time. And so you can kind of see how that has grown, those exemptions, and now they hover about 26, almost 27% of the total.
So that's, Colin, at 2.17 is a local to follow Josh's logic path. 2.17 million is local, and 3.74 is state?
Correct.
That's great.
Yes, sir.
And these exemptions are, they don't automatically roll, right? We vote on those every year as well?
No. Once they're voted on, they'll stay in place until you decide to change.
But we could decide not to do these, right? Not that, I'm not suggesting that we do.
Sure.
But to me, that's $2 million savings there that is expressed as, should be expressed as tax.
Mayor, once these are voted in, I'm going to have to check, and I'll follow up with you. I don't believe that you can actually repeal these.
Right. I surely do not want to, but I just want to make sure that we know that we are getting this 2.17 million.
No, we're in for it at this point.
Some of the state exemptions are voted on by the state, and those get calculated in automatically. So, thank you, Mayor. Alright, transitioning over into our general fund expenses and diving into the history by category, this is similar to the slide that you saw for the revenues. As you can see at the far left-hand side, compensation and benefits, because our general fund is primarily a service-oriented fund, you can see that compensation and benefits take up the lion's share of the percentage of general fund expenses. And you can see how those expenses have grown over time as we've done things like funded cost-of-living adjustments and the police and fire contracts with regards to compensation, as well as benefits and funding those things. The next largest portion is our transfers out, and those transfers out are going to be for things like the street maintenance transfer over to that street maintenance fund for those street expenses, health services, there's a transfer out for health services, Texas Ranger Hall of Fame, Parks Performance, and some of those subsidies over to those enterprise funds like Zoo and the airport, and then there's also an economic development transfer. And then you can see the rest of our standard expenses there in terms of supplies and maintenance and contractual. On the right-hand side, the pie chart shows, again, a majority is compensation and benefits and those transfers out. Those combine up to 77% of our forecast through the rest of fiscal '25. And so then you can see that the rest of the pie chart shows those other expenses, maintenance and contract supplies, et cetera. This slide right here is a double pie chart, and I want to orient you to this slide first. So I look at this slide kind of like looking at High Noon, looking at it like it's a clock that rotates clockwise, and the outer band are our revenues, and the inner pie chart are the expenses. And so you can see, looking again at High Noon and kind of rotating around the 1 o'clock and 2 o'clock and 3 o'clock, you can see we're into our property taxes, and for our expenses, we're into our police expenses, and then our fire expenses. And so you can see how our property taxes collections do not even cover all of our police and fire expenses. And as we continue to go around the 6 o'clock portion of the pie chart, we get into our contributions and our sales taxes. And as we continue around, you can see that our property taxes and our sales taxes just barely cover over our police expenses, our fire expenses, and those contribution expenses. There's a note for our contribution expenses, those kind of track back to those transfers that I was talking about for street maintenance, rolling stock, equipment, vehicle replacement, economic development, and those subsidies to enterprise funds and outside agencies. So the key takeaway on this is 100% of our property taxes and sales taxes cover 100% of our public safety and our contributions. This leaves 18 of our general fund departments to be funded by other revenue sources. And so it just kind of gives you an idea of our total expenses versus our different revenue sources on this pie chart.
And again, that, when we look at what the entire amount's right at 200 million, right?
Yes, sir. That's right. Around 200, 202, 205. Yes, sir.
Got it. Alright, Mayor Council, we're going to switch over to some personnel and some compensation discussions at this point. And overall, our general fund, non-general fund, you know, if you look at our total headcount of authorized personnel, over these last five years, we've only grown by about 5.7% as a whole. Our authorized numbers in 2021 were about 1,667. In this latest year, 1,763. So 5.7% increase overall in headcount over five years. And you can see, based upon the chart on the left and the chart on the right, where the majority of those are, and that's in your public safety, your water and your wastewater, and your solid waste personnel. So that's where the majority of the headcount has come in over the last few years. You do see some that have decreased, such as public health. So after some of those grants ran out, some of those personnel were on a grant basis, so they have exited from the organization. But really, where we're going in this is the investment in the public safety compensation that we've done over the last few years. So in 2022, Waco, we identified, was far behind some of the peer cities for pay for fire and police. This caused a lot of challenges for those two departments to provide the services that we needed and expected from two very good professional organizations in this size of a city. So we did enter with the council, with the associations, and with the city as a whole into collective bargaining and meet and confer with those two associations to go over a lot of different aspects, but the compensation was a big portion of that. We identified that the average firefighter was 14% below our peer cities midpoint, police recruits 28% below, and the average police officer was 8% below this peer cities midpoint. So again, we came to the table, we started working through a plan. That was a three-year plan for fiscal years, what would have been '24, '25, and this upcoming fiscal year '26. We also allowed for the adjustment to what we call float up by an additional 4% because in this, in the analysis, we knew that the peer cities were also going to add to their public safety compensation every single year. We didn't know exactly what, but we knew it would, so that additional float up would help keep us in line so that the next time that we were coming to the table in collective bargaining and the meet and confer, we were at least in line with the midpoint of the peer cities. And you see in the chart below, kind of the breakdown from fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22, really, the breakdown in pay for the fire and police, fire being at about 38, 39%, sorry, fire being at 28%, police being at 38% to 39%, and then the remaining portion going to general fund. You can see on the far right how that has switched a little bit, and the general fund, other general fund, has been about 30% of our total compensation. Fire is up to almost 42, and, I'm sorry, I keep getting this confused, police is up to about 42%, and fire is up to 28.4%.
Blue, with where we're at with that comp for police and fire, and the percentage of our budget that it is requiring to keep pacey, then are we, and by we, I mean you, and soon to be me, once you inform me, seeing this across the state in terms of how cities and municipalities are dealing with the rising cost of competing for the best talent for their public service?
We do, council member. We see some significant increases across, dealt with this in my former city as well. So the increases are generally higher than the general service increase for the rest of the city.
Yep.
And that is to attract and retain good talent. It is a very competitive market. So in that type of competitive market, you are going to have to adjust upwards in order to attract and retain and allow them to get the people that they need.
Yeah. And do you know off the top of your head, and I know someone in this room does, please don't shout it from the crowd, the mayor will gavel you down, but do we know what our gap is between budget allotment and sworn peace officers for PD right now? Bradley, do you know?
For right now, we are...
It's 15 positions.
15 positions?
Opened currently.
Okay.
Ryan would know that.
Thanks, Blue.
Yes, sir. So, all right. Little bit further into the investment in our public safety compensation, up on the top, you're going to see your fire civil service, the bottom chart is going to be your police civil service. So when we entered with fire on the collective bargaining agreement, those salary increases in fiscal year '23, you had competent benefits at $25.6 million. In fiscal year '26, we are budgeting for $33.1 million. So you can see in that top portion of that top chart, the year-over-year changes have been about 3.3, 2 million, and what we're expecting is 2.1. So that's a 13% increase, 7.1% increase, and then a 7% increase in fiscal year '26. The cumulative over those three years is that $7.5 million of investment into the compensation, the salary and benefits for these. On the bottom part of these two charts is if those civil service had only received the general service increase for the citywide. So that was a 5, a 3, and a 3% in those respective years, kind of what we're planning on. So you can see that the additional investment in fire in that dark blue line came out to about $2 million over the general service increase, 3.2 million in fiscal year '25, and what we anticipate is 4.6 in fiscal year '26. So a good $4.6 million investment above and beyond the general COLA. Same thing with the police down on the bottom chart. Where we started was $33.6 million, and the police, where we are budgeting is $41.7 million. So that is a cumulative increase of 7.8 million. So between the two, you're getting close to about $15 million over those three years of compensation and benefits increases going to fire and police. So again, if you look at that bottom, you're looking at $4 million over those three years above and beyond the general service increase for the city going to police.
Before you leave, go ahead. Andrea?
Not at all.
Okay. I thought I heard it.
I mean, I can talk, but we've got places to go.
This kind of, it doesn't close out, but this was the part where you're talking about public safety and police and fire, and our two agreements that we're going through, the collective bargaining agreement and the meet and confer, which come up again next year, right? So we're going to have to be picking up the box, not in this budget, but in next year's budget.
That's great.
And just going back to your point about, I think this has been a high priority for this council, public safety, you know, and you can see, it's not, we're having great return on investment. Crime rates lowest in 30-plus years, response times are the best, you know, but it's not a cheap enterprise by any means, it's not inexpensive. So we're trying to be mindful of it, but yet still have people feel safe as they go to work and school and church and their friends and out and spend money in the city. But anyway, good work on kind of laying this out, because I had these very questions on this, on how that translated into what the standard COLA would be. But great work here.
Thanks, Mayor. We've had a little bit of a discussion on TMRS lately, so TMRS is another big portion of our budget and what we have to plan on for the city's contribution every single year. So I wanted to kind of introduce this to you and give you a little bit of history on our funded ratio and contribution rates. So from 2014 up until 2021, you can see the city's contribution rate was at that 13% to almost 14, a little over 14%. It was really hovering pretty stably over those. The city is on a, what we call a two-to-one match. So the employee contribution being at 7%, the city's contribution is two-to-one to that, so 14%. That is what is absolutely required for our funding plan in this. So when we look at this, our funded ratio is really the ratio of your assets to your overall pension liability. So the assets being what you're bringing in on your investment returns, what you're having in contributions, all of that goes into your assets. So what this is saying is, from 2014 up to 2021, when in 2021, we reached a 90.2% funded ratio, we had essentially $9 of assets for every $10 of liability. So that 90% right there, very, very healthy fund. In 2022, effective for the fiscal year '23 budget year, the city adopted a 30% repeating non-retroactive COLA. So instead of a retroactive COLA going all the way back to when an employee retires, it only looked back for the last 12 years and gave, it gives a repeating COLA every single year at 30% of what the cost-of-living adjustment is for our area, for Texas, for the United States really as a whole. But what they're looking at is 30% of that every single year increasing. So that's the plan that we have going forward. When we made that change, that immediately increases your liability because now you're going to have to pay more over the life of the retirees. So therefore, your funding ratio, because the liability is immediately increased, your funding ratio drops to 84%, which means that we need to start contributing more in order to make up the assets to match the liability increase. So the city's contribution went from that 13.67% up to almost 17.6%. Next year, we made a little bit of ground, 84.2% on the funding ratio with an 18.04% contribution rate. We did just get our contribution letter for 2024, for, I'm sorry, for 2025. We don't have this data yet for 2024, but for 2025, fiscal year '26, that contribution rate is going to be going up to 18.13%. So how does this compare? Where is Waco compared to all other Texas cities? We can always pick out a lot of different peers and comp analysis, but, you know, out of all cities in Texas that are on TMRS, where is Waco at that 84.2% funded ratio, which is still healthy? We still are below 83% of all other Texas cities on TMRS. So still have a lot of ground to gain on our actual funding ratio. As far as our contribution rate at that 18.04%, that is higher than 92% of other cities. So 92% of cities across Texas, the employer contribution, the city's contribution, is less on a percentage basis than what Waco is contributing. And the last, where do we stand as far as the different options that are available by TMRS for retirees? There's four different options, 0, 30, 50, and 70% of that, or 70% or above. 406 cities are at that 70% or above, 44 are at the 50%. We are at the 30% with another 43 other cities, so 44 total cities in Texas are at that 30%. And then you have 427 cities across Texas that have 0% on their COLA. So no COLA at all for their retirees. So right, city of Waco is right at the midpoint within Texas.
Is there any way that could be weighted? I'm just thinking, because I don't know if those 427 are, you know, 1,000 people or less, and they just don't have the resources, or if it's Houston and Dallas and everybody else.
I think we can eventually get that information. It might take a little bit longer than what we have right now, but we can probably get that information for you.
I mean, I don't know that it has to be that, Dave. I'm sure if it's the small, you know, three to five small cities, we assume that these are cities that are like us, and then the larger cities. So, I mean, I don't know, is that what you meant?
Yeah. I just want to know where Houston, Dallas, Austin, and San Antonio, are they in that top one or the bottom one?
Well, when you get to those larger cities, they're on their own pension plans, so they're not part of TMR. they're not part of TMRS. I mean, San Antonio is going to be the largest city that was on a TMRS. I don't think they've gone off. But others, those other cities are all on their own pension plans outside of TMRS.
And I know that this is a, but one facet of what you're going over, but why is that? Like, why are they, why do they have their own plans versus participating?
It was a decision that was made for them a long time ago, and it's just carried forward. They have their own pension plan that reports to the pension review board. So they are, they have to manage their own investments and earnings.
It also gives them flexibility because TMRS is a guided system under legislature rules. And operating a system independently gives them flexibility outside of those rules.
So you have more flexibility, but also probably more risk in managing your own.
Yeah, I think a review of the headlines over the last ten years would indicate there are several of the cities listed that have been through traumatic experiences. Houston, for one, had to issue two billion dollars' worth of debt in order to shore up their pension system recently, which is obviously traumatic to get their funded ratios back where they need to be. Because pensions are long-term liabilities, and pension boards sometimes have short-term vantage points or views on benefits. And that's one of the reasons we're spending so much time on this. A, we want to be responsive to our retirees who we really appreciate their service. But y'all, as a governing body, as you evaluate COLAs, we're going to show you some numbers here in a minute, those decisions are very weighty decisions financially. And we want to make sure, as we're conversating about COLA or changes to COLA, that we're putting those numbers out in public view for y'all to consider.
Thank you.
Blue, Colin, the cities that have the funded ratios, a lot of them well in excess of one-hundred percent. What are they doing? What are they trying to accomplish, or what's happening there?
It's an interesting strategy, because, I mean, you don't really, you want to be around that one-hundred percent mark. So if I had my guess, and this is totally a guess, they would be decreasing their funding contribution to less than the fourteen percent, probably even down around the ten, eleven, twelve percent range in order to let their liabilities grow over time. So once you get over to that hundred percent, what you're essentially doing is taking a lot of dollars out of people's pockets today for a future benefit that they're not really going to see. So it's costing your city a little bit more than what it necessarily should at this point. So I'm sure that they have a strategy. I've never been in one of those cities, but I'm sure they have a strategy to start bringing that down.
Thanks.
Thanks, Blue. Mayor Council, this next one, at the top is just a little bit of our overall statistics for our plan. So the valuations that we have right now. So when I talked about that funding ratio of being about eighty-four percent, you can see our accrued liabilities at six-hundred-and-seventy million dollars and our smoothed assets at five-hundred-and-sixty-four million dollars. So that gives you their funding ratio of eighty-four-point-two percent. Some people have asked what that smoothed is. And what they do, what TMRS does on the actuary side, is any investment gains or losses are smoothed out over five years. So if you gain a certain amount in one year, you don't get to take credit for all of that in one single year. You get to take credit for twenty percent of that for five years. So it just really smoothes out that balance so that you're not, your contribution rate isn't going up and down significantly each year, which kind of, it gives us a little bit of budgetary expectations that that rate is not going to dramatically shift from year to year. So as far as our member data summary, we have about sixteen-hundred members, twelve-hundred, a little over twelve-hundred retirees. The average age of our current participants that are actually participating in the fund is forty-four years old with an average service of almost eleven years. So we've got a lot of people that are nearing that retirement age, which is also what is putting a little bit of pressure on our plan, because we do have a lot of retirements that are expected to come up over the next few years that we're trying to go ahead and fund for so that we have a healthy plan for all future employees. If you look at the chart on the bottom, I want to kind of go over this right now. Like I said, we got our funding plan, and we got our expected payroll numbers from TMRS. So what we can plan for for fiscal year twenty-six, and that current plan that we have is the thirty percent COLA, non-retroactive, but also repeating. And at that eighteen-point-one-three percent contribution rate for the employee and employers, excuse me, the employee contribution stays the same at that seven percent, but our eighteen-point-one-three percent turns into a contribution of twenty-three-point-three million dollars for the total contribution of thirty-two-point-three million dollars. There are different options that are still available under the current state law that just changed to allow us to go into different options. And this is what you've heard from some of the retirees, is there's different options, thirty percent retroactive, fifty percent retro and non-retro, seventy percent retro and non-retro. There's also seventy percent ad hoc that they're not really doing anymore, but we're just kind of trying to estimate all of these at this point. So what we've done is kind of calculated out what it would cost the city to go to one of these plans. And on the low end, if we stayed at the thirty percent and went ahead and did the retroactive to look all the way back to the point where the retiree went into retirement, that would cost the city annually, right now, one-point-five million dollars extra per year. You could take that all the way to the end, and what you've heard a lot about is the seventy percent retroactive. Seventy percent retroactive would increase our required contribution up to about twenty-six-point-seven percent, up from that eighteen percent. Take about thirty-four-point-three million dollars of employer contribution, and this is an annual amount that we'd have to increase by almost eleven million dollars every year going forward. And as our payroll increases, that contribution will continue to increase. So you have a lot of different options available, but some of these will cost the city significantly through the future years. Mayor Council, any questions on this?
That's the last page on TMRS, right?
That is.
Probably the best explanation we've had in many years. I appreciate the data.
All right. Real quickly, on the utility rates and charges, we just want to look at the overall bill, just to give you a little bit of expectation of what we're seeing. And again, some background information. So from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-five, we have seen the average customer, the average customer being eight thousand gallons of water, five thousand on the wastewater side. We've seen a little bit of an increase from one-hundred-and-twelve dollars up to one-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. That does include the street maintenance fee of two dollars per month in fiscal year twenty-five. That amounts to an annual increase on the water side being very flat, but the wastewater being four-point-one and solid waste being five-point-five percent. Both the wastewater and the solid waste were planned rate increases in order to take care of some of those large projects, such as the new landfill, the transfer station, and the bullhide expansion. So there have all been reasons for these increases. When you put these into the average customer on an inflation-adjusted and bring everything up to a twenty, twenty-five dollar, you can see that in 2021, that inflation-adjusted amount would have been about one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, where we are at one-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and forty-one cents per month right now. So we did decrease a little bit, stayed below inflation, but we did increase over this last year just slightly. But that overall annual increase, when you calculate it out, taking into account inflation, water has decreased three-point-one percent per year. Wastewater has stayed right in line. Solid waste is the one that has come up just a little bit above inflation at one-point-three percent. We also wanted to look at the high-water users. So thirty thousand gallons of water, five thousand of wastewater. So the annual increases on this have increased from two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars on a raw basis up to three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars per month in fiscal year twenty-five. This is where you do see, on the right-hand side, even when you adjust for inflation, because of the rate structures that we have put in place for some conservation efforts, which we're still evaluating, we're still trying to gather all the data to see if these conservation efforts are really taking hold. You do see that water has increased by five percent per year over those five years. Wastewater, again, at that, right at that level of inflation, and solid waste being slightly above at one-point-three percent. A lot of people have asked, so we went ahead and decided to put this up. Where are the high-water users? That's thirty thousand, forty thousand, and fifty thousand up. So these are the areas where those high-water users are located within the city.
I'm happy to say that I do not have a dot on this map.
Congratulations, Mayor.
My lawn is proof of that.
Now, what we wanted to say on this, too, is, you know, if we're looking at all of the accounts that we have, all water users, these high-water users make up about three percent of our total residential accounts, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-nine. So as a percentage of the whole, the high-water users are not a large portion, a large share of our overall water usage.
We don't want to go back to that map and district shame a little bit?
No, we don't.
No shame at all. No shame at all. Just facts.
Just facts. These are just raw.
Mayor Council, a little bit on the eighty-ninth of Texas Legislature. So as we sit, Sunny Day was yesterday, June second. So midnight struck, and the eighty-ninth legislative session ended. So notable finance bills that we were watching that are not moving forward, House Bill Nineteen was kind of an omnibus bill, had a lot of changes that would have affected us on the financial side, what we could and could not do with debt, with COs, a lot of caps on the debt issuances themselves based upon some ratios and when you can issue debt and when you cannot, change to all bond elections to November, and increase the moratorium. So if we had a general obligation referendum, a bond election that failed, currently that moratorium is three years, this would have extended out to five years. House Bill Nineteen did not make it through the session, so that one died. House Bill Fourteen-Fifty-Three, a lot of the changes that were in House Bill Nineteen came from House Bill Fourteen-Fifty-Three on the eligible uses of COs. Again, that one did not make it through. House Bill Forty-two-seventy-two would have required the city to fund all utility telecom line relocates if we were doing any type of roadway projects. Instead of today, how that is, is those telecom companies would have to fund their own utility line relocates. This would have said if the city is doing a roadway project and we are forcing somebody to move a utility line, we would have to pay for that. That one did not make it through either. Senate Bill Ten-Twenty-Four, that was another change to the CO moratorium. That, again, went from three years to five years. And Senate Bill Twenty-eight-Fifty-A, which we were calling the super preemption, a lot of super preemptions, so based upon the state codes, much like what the last legislative session did. They were trying that again with some different portions of the Texas state law. But also, this one went a little bit further and said, there was a portion of this bill that we were watching pretty closely that said, if there was a complaint and an investigation, a complaint to the AG's office, and an investigation was started by the AG, at that moment of the beginning of the investigation, so not even a lawsuit being filed, nothing like that, just the beginning of an investigation, the AG was allowed to withhold all sales tax from the city until the end of the investigation, until the city repealed whatever they were doing, until there was some resolution that the AG agreed with, up to and including a lawsuit, the AG would withhold all that sales tax. Now, if you went through that entire process and won in court, you would get all that sales tax back. But during that process, you would get zero sales tax. And you saw what we talked about earlier, how much of the sales tax and how much of the city is dependent on the sales tax. You think about, you know, the majority of your police and your fire not being funded by sales tax anymore, and what that would do to the general fund. You know, essentially, this would mean, in reality, a city could not function if there was a complaint and an investigation opened by the AG's office. So they were, this almost seemed like it was intentionally prematurely punishing cities for even trying to do something that might be out of line with something in the codes.
How far did that get? Did that die in committee?
That got out of Senate. That got to a committee, but it didn't get to the House floor. Now, on the flip side, we talked about some that did not go through. These are notable finance bills that have gone through and have either been sent to the governor's desk for signature, with one actually already being signed. So House Bill Nine, this is one that we are watching, increases the business personal property exemption to one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for each business. The current exemption is at twenty-five-hundred dollars. So you're talking about going from one-hundred-and-twenty-five-hundred up to one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. So right now, there's five-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-three businesses in Waco that qualified for this exemption. One-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-one of them right now have business personal property less than that two-thousand-five-hundred. So one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-one are receiving a hundred percent exemption. Once this bill goes through and is signed by the governor and comes into place, there's now going to be four-thousand-four-hundred businesses. So seventy-nine percent of our five-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-three businesses are going to be one-hundred percent exempt on their business personal property. That will reduce the city's MNO levy. Right now, that's a one-point-seven million dollar impact on our MNO levy. So you got definitely one-point-seven million dollars coming out of your MNO tax rate. And then that MNO is what, again, goes to fire, police, safety contributions, all of the general administration that we're doing in the cities.
It's a big circle in the pie. It's that outside circle, and that was going to be...
It's going to be a little bit less. A little bit smaller.
I want to say, yeah, yay for the business personal property folks, but not so great.
It is good for them.
Not so great for us.
It is good for them.
We just got to figure out where, we got to add another two million back into the revenue somehow.
One good bill, Senate Bill Eleven-seventy-three, that did go through. That's pending the governor's signature. But this increases the competitive procurement threshold from fifty thousand up to a hundred thousand. So that fifty thousand was put in many, many years ago, and it was never adjusted for inflation. A lot of people are saying, you know, what you could buy for fifty thousand back in the eighties, you can't even touch for fifty thousand nowadays. So this allows the cities to have a little bit more flexibility to go forward with purchases up to that hundred-thousand-dollar mark without having to do any extra steps. Senate Bill Fourteen-Fifty-Three establishes that the cities must adopt a minimum debt rate. So when we're adopting our tax rate, there are ways to say, we're going to retire debt early, so we're increasing our INS rate. That has been now struck down. So cities must adopt the minimum. They did give, and in some of the amendments, they did give the cities the ability to circumvent that, I'm not going to say circumvent, but adopt a higher INS tax rate. It just takes a little bit more action by the council, a little bit more action by staff. We have to describe exactly what the money is going to be used for, and it has to be a sixty percent vote of the city council in order to do that. So there are still ways. They did give us a little bit of leeway in what we can do and how we can operate. But it did actually set that that minimum debt rate is what is the default now. And then Senate Bill Eighteen-Fifty-One, this one did go through and has already been signed off by the governor. So this one is in effect on September first, 2025. And this requires that a city who fails to file an audit within the given period of that a city who fails to file an audit within the given period of time that we're supposed to file an audit, which is 180 days after the end of the fiscal year, they are required to adopt the no new revenue tax rate until the city complies with that audit requirement. So we have not been close to this. This is not a major impact to us. Where we believe that this is going to have a major impact is more the smaller communities that have a little bit harder time getting an auditor to come out there to their small communities. This is where that's going to be.
It's going to be certainly harder for the smaller communities. And if they haven't filed audits, then that means that not only moving forward, they have to go backwards, and so it's almost going to be impossible.
That's correct. They have to get, they have to catch up, all of them.
Before we leave that, I just want to quickly say, this, given that HB 19, 1453, and SB 2858, those have been disasters for the city. So I feel like it could have been worse, right? And I do, I just want to say thanks to City Manager Ford, Ashley Neistrom back there, who kind of organized, and you blew, Ashley's back there, organized a very thoughtful approach and summary and update every week to show, and you went down and testified as well. City Manager Ford and Ashley both went down to Austin to help us out. And I think that we kept very close contact with State Representative Curry and State Senator Brian Birdwell. So I want to, how important that is in this whole process. So I appreciate, and Mayor Proton Bearfield, also, we met with you every Friday afternoon just to kind of get updates. And her input with TML and her vast knowledge of what's going on down there really is helpful as well. So I just think that open communication and cooperation has helped us on that. So, great summary.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor and Council, looking at federal grant status slide. As you all know, federal grants have been a hot topic for the last several months. So we've got multiple federal grants spread over, looks like nine or 10 different departments. You can see that out of these grants, they're funding 173.9 positions. That's down there at the bottom. FTE stands for full-time equivalent. So that can be a full-time position or a part-time position. And those total hours there are combined into what's called an FTE. So that's 173.9 positions. We've encumbered $6.553 million worth of expenses, and those encumbrances basically mean that we've got a contract or a purchase order on those funds. We've reserved that money in those budgets for that money to be spent over the rest of the fiscal year. For fiscal '25, year-to-date, we've actually spent $11,210,000 of those grant monies. And then we have some unreimbursed amounts from fiscal '24. That totals about $879,000 from the Public Works Department and the Airport Department. Our unreimbursed expenses for FY '25 are $7.156 million. We've got unexecuted grants. These are grants that have been awarded but not yet signed. That's $11.2 million of those grants that, again, have been awarded, but the grant agreement has not been signed. And then, on the far right, the canceled balance, those are grants that have actually been canceled by the federal agencies. That's $4,283,951, primarily in the Health Department, $2,48,000, and then in the Housing and Community Development Department, $2.235 million. So wanted to provide a federal grant update to you all and kind of summarize these data in a slide for you.
On Friday, are we going to go over this again on Friday? This is one I wanted to walk through a little more deliberately, but I don't want to take the time today. Because I know that relative to some of the resolutions today that were state and federal health-related, I just, we need to get a better feel for our budgeting process on what's coming in and what's stopping and what's canceled. And it's a nice summary here, but I just want to fully understand it. We'll do that on Friday.
We can do that, Mayor.
If I'm remembering right, there are applications that are in the resolutions today. But, I mean, and I think where we are is we still kind of have to, until they pull it, we're still going to ask for it. But I don't know how we plan for it. And I know that when we visit DC, we're going to be asking these questions, for sure, meeting with some of the departments that do provide some of this funding. The unfortunate is, I believe, at this point, everyone's hands are kind of tied. And I'm not sure what we'll come back with. But I know that Mayor and Bradley and the rest of my fellow council members that are going will certainly ask the questions. Because that is $4.2 million that our community has to do without. And we have to ask the questions, how do they expect, what do they expect us to do for our communities?
Mayor Council wrapping up. Just a little bit of highlights to go over. You have those listed here, some of the general fund. We are looking at those revenue diversions and how that impacts our budget and our planning going forward. You know, inflation still remains a concern. That's going to really impact a lot of our operations next year, the biz, the standard cost of living. So something that we are always looking at is the inflation and the effect of that on the budget itself. Personnel always remains one of our biggest categories, but also one of the most important things that we have going on here, our people. And part of that is the public safety aspect of this. So, Mayor, like you mentioned, we are in the third year of the collective bargaining and meeting for agreements. But we will be back at the table in early 2026 to talk about that further. So working on our next plan with them. TMRS, the utility rates, and then, of course, all this leads up to the city council budget retreat this coming Friday at the brick from 9:00 to 3:00 o'clock. Mayor Council, with that, we're going to stop here and take any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Kostelich or Mr. Both?
Appreciate the work in putting this presentation together. It was very understandable, for me at least. So thank you both and for all the good work you're doing in a challenging budget cycle.
Yep. Great presentation. We'll continue it on Friday.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate you guys.
City Manager Ford, I will let you introduce the next speaker. We're running a little bit long on the schedule, but yeah.
Our next presentation, we've got Charles Leest, our Director of Infrastructure Services, coming up for Work Session 373, which is an update on the City of Waco Street Program, including kind of a look back at our successes on projects and funding, as well as the current street work we have ongoing, and a look ahead at both our future street plans, as well as, you know, kind of our 10-year funding strategy for the program. Charles, look forward to your presentation. Welcome. Is this your first presentation since your new title? Can't remember?
I don't remember.
I don't think so.
You don't remember. Well, for the viewing audience, Charles just recently took over the role as Director of Infrastructure Services as department director. He's doing a fine job, and he's learned something very valuable, which is, with a moment's notice, sometimes a city manager asks for a presentation. And here he is.
Throw something together.
That is true. Thank you, City Manager Ford. Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. This is a presentation on Better Streets Waco. It's an updated presentation from my Slidorama that we did in December. I think it was a marathon session. And so I'm going to use this opportunity today to dive into some details. Feel free to stop me and ask any questions that you have. Agenda, go over some historical overview of the Better Streets Waco program, talk about some accomplishments, get into some active projects, and talk about all things, fundings, and strategies. Okay. Start off with what the investment has been since Better Streets Waco has started. The program was in 2019. We're here in 2025, and anywhere from $50 to $65 million broken out amongst these general fund classes. So we've got green streets, COs, we've got some water and wastewater COs that go in conjunction with the installation of a new street or a replacement of a street. We've got TIF monies, I believe that was in 2223, that would have been University Parks, Sandtown, and River Street. We've got street maintenance fee capital funds, some general fund capital. And then, of course, we've got maintenance and operations and engineering traffic and public works. So a significant investment over the last five years. And keep in mind, a little asterisk down here at the bottom, that this funding does not include funds for bridges, sidewalks, new capacity streets, signals, grant matching funds, and et cetera. So Council has done an excellent job in funding these street rehabilitations and preservations in an effort to move the needle and move our streets to a good condition. What does that look like in comparison to 2015? In 2015, we had about a $15 million investment. So we're three and a half to four times in 2025 what the city had invested in 2015. It's fantastic. And we'll get into the details here on how that needle is moving.
Great slide, Charles. I got to ask Paul Kane one question. Paul, this is a slide that we tried to come up with about a year ago, but this looks a lot cooler, right?
Yeah. Charles had a lot better way of presenting it than we had last year, I believe.
It is. And we were trying to figure out the total investment. This really brings it home. Thanks, Charles.
Absolutely. All right. A little bit of background on the actual condition here of pavement in Waco. City area is about 100 square miles. We have 1,534 lane miles of street. Now, that is a 13-foot street, 5,280 feet long. So it's just kind of a general reference. Current condition, poor, 38% of our streets. Condition fair, 19% of our streets. And the good condition, 43%. This slide shows a breakdown of what that investment by Council has done between 19 and 25 by street classification. So we have local streets, collectors, arterials, and others. Others would be an access street or a park street. So, for example, on the left chart in fiscal year 19, there were 159 lane miles of good-conditioned local streets. In 2025, good-conditioned local streets, 406 lane miles. So really moving the needle. For example, collector streets, in 2019, 108 lane miles were in fair condition. In 2025, there's only 46. And the reason is, the investment has been made to move those fair collectors to a good condition. All right. Here's a breakdown by council district. So on the left, in 2025, you see council district lane miles and the fraction that is good, fair, and poor condition. So for example, District 3, 168 lane miles of good condition, 42 lane miles of fair, 68 lane miles of poor condition. A little different twist to this, on the right, you see it by percentage. So District 4, 21% good condition, 19% fair condition, 60% poor condition. Now, what does this investment look like in a percent change since 2019? Fantastic. We're 169% to 251% increase in the number of good lane miles. District 1, for example, in fiscal year 19 had 61 good lane miles. They're up to 132. It's a 216% increase. All right. Let's get into the weeds a little bit here with dollars and strategy. So this is a chart that illustrates the cost of asphalt. Now, this is a text dot average chart. So, and the important thing to see is, is that from December of '13 through about June of '21, prices were generally in the $75 to $85 a ton. So specifically, May 2019, $75.43 a ton. We hit December of '21, and costs start to exponentially increase. And by the time you hit May of 2023, the cost for the material has gone to $127.61 a ton. And that continued that trend through 2024. It's just recently that some of these costs are coming down. And how does this play into our strategy? Well, it makes budgeting very difficult. The other thing that goes along with this, all construction labor has also done the same trend. So our dollars aren't going as far as they used to. I'm hoping that we continue to see some settlement out, and we've gotten some decent bid prices as of late in the street program. So hopefully, we can get more money, more square feet or square yards for our dollar here in the next few months, because we've got a few packages and projects that are going to be coming out. All right. Sometimes I get asked the question, what does the deterioration of a street look like? So this chart shows condition versus time. If you don't do any work, it's generally about three PCI points a year. Now, it's not linear. There is a curve to this. So this chart shows our categories, fair being the yellow section from 40 to 60, good being from, in the green, and poor and being in the red. And if you do no work in five years, you could apply a preservation treatment, a fog seal or rejuvenator application. And you can go all the way down the chart. So if you wait till 15 years, you're talking about no work. You're probably in a poor street classification, and you'd be doing maybe a full-depth reclamation to repair that street. Okay. So we've talked a little bit about costs going up, how things deteriorate. This is a chart that illustrates our three types of street repair or replacement and what those costs are. So on the lower end, if you have a pavement in good condition, it's a low cost to treat that pavement. We call that a preservation. It's about $24 a square yard to preserve a decent street. If you look here, that's about three times what the cost was in 2025, what it was in 2019. So $61,000 a lane mile in 2019, $184,000 now. That makes budgeting and planning challenging. Rehabilitation, we're at about $92 a square yard. This would be your mill and overlay type projects. In 2019, we were at 275,000. In 2025, we're at 702,000 a lane mile, about two and a half times as much. Same thing with reconstruction. About two and a half times the cost from 2019 to 2025. We're at $420 a square yard. That's a full remove and replacement of an existing street.
Director, do you have an idea of what aspect of the... Bless you.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of what aspect of the construction process when it comes to, is it labor, is it material, has caused this increase? Is there a specific type of material, depending on what kind of job we're using, that's skyrocketed?
Generally, and on the utility side as well, just all materials up, all labor up. Equipment is up. I think...
That was my sneaking suspicion. I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah. We have delays in deliveries, and that leads to delays in installations, which adds more to the cost. It's been a very challenging time for our in-house and our outhouse engineers to provide applicable opinions of probable cost to budget for these programs.
Yeah. Doesn't help that it's, by its very nature, a more reactionary process of redoing these roads.
And every day, it gets worse.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to get into a little bit of the strategy. Having a go over the cost and the preservation, rehabilitation, replacement opportunities, there are different ways to manage an effective maintenance cycle of a paving program. So consider a 24-foot lane mile, and inflation for this strategy discussion is going to be about 4% a year. So imagine we have a new street for both strategies, and you're zero. If you follow the instruction manual and you maintain a street per recommended application... If you follow the instruction manual and you maintain a street per recommended application, you might in year six do a surface treatment to keep your street in good shape. And in year 13, you might do another application and spend $541,000 in a surface seal. And in year 20, you might do a maintenance treatment of an overlay. Now these are inflation adjusted dollars. That's going to cost you about $2.7 million for that lane mile. That's going to raise that 75 score on the pavement condition, your PCI, up back to 100 and you're going to start over. And you're going to cycle this maintenance again and you're going to do those treatments, inflation adjusted, all the way out to year 50. Okay, so labor intensive, certainly expensive. What's nice about this management style is your customer is driving in a good condition for 50 years. Maybe bad for radar, running radar and tickets when it comes to speeding and the available, you know, condition of the roadway there. But certainly it's an enjoyable riding surface. And you might consider a second strategy. And that strategy would be, well, I'm going to start with a new street and I'm just going to let it go and I'm not going to do any maintenance. That would be the other end of the seesaw. So in year zero, you'd have 100 pavement score. You follow the degradation curve that we discussed previously. And your pavement is considered to be poor somewhere in year 18 or so. And you let that pavement continue to degrade until your, is no longer drivable. And in year 25, you decide, oh, I'm going to spend the money and I'm going to reconstruct that street. So you invest your $15 million and you bring that surface back to 100 pavement condition index and you cycle again to year 50. When you compare those strategies over the 50-year life, re-occurring maintenance activity, just the sum of all of those investments is about $12 million. If you defer your maintenance or you don't do any maintenance, that sum is about $15 million. So it's a 25% or so savings if you'll stay on top of that street condition. There are two key things to remember. One is ride quality. If you follow the first strategy, you've got 100% good riding for 50 years. You've got a thorough fair. If you do the deferred maintenance, you spend 28% of your time in a poor condition and 16% of your time in a fair condition. Only half of your time is on a, on a good street condition. The other point is, is if you look at year 50, your maintenance strategy, that is where you're taking care of it in accordance with the book, you're still on a good street. Your PCI score is an 85-ish, but your deferred maintenance curve, you need to rebuild the street again. And that street cost isn't shown, but it's going to be double year 25. So you're looking at another $30 million investment. So clearly, if you'll maintain the streets over the cycle of street life, it's cheaper than doing deferred maintenance. Questions about that?
So in the 50-year for deferred, you're not, you're, it's, actually on the recurring, it is 12, 12 million.
And you're, the, the sum of all of the reoccurring charges under the first strategy is 12 million. Okay?
But if you're building, yeah, if you defer, you're building it twice. So that's where you get the 30.
Yeah, well, yes. So in the timeframe shown, it's just rebuilt once. By the time you get to the end of the timeframe though, you'll have to start over. And so that's going to add another 30 million, inflation adjusted.
Another 15, yeah.
On top of the 15.
On top of the 15, correct.
And I mean, this isn't like a strategy chosen in a vacuum. We have a...
This is an ideal, these are ideal...
Ideal strategies.
On two ends of the spectrum. The reality is, is you're somewhere in between.
Right. And the council that, kind of the Better Streets Waco initiative, that was what, about 10 years ago or a little after that, or a little shorter than that, maybe?
Seven, eight years ago.
Seven, eight years ago, that adopted that was also responding to a street system in Waco that had seen more of the deferred maintenance approach for years. Is that fair to say?
That's very fair to say.
Because there was a period where Waco essentially did not grow very much over a 30-year period and there was a lot of infrastructure deferred maintenance that we're still obviously dealing with and situation that we're living in right now.
Absolutely. I've got a slide for you, yes.
Okay, so I'm jumping ahead.
Yes. In fact, that 25 year is probably more like a 40-year on some of those. So you were probably with PCI's at zero. You see that curve flattens out quite a bit, so it takes a while to get to zero, but that would be my guess. Okay, so...
It's a great slide, great slide. Bring a lot of science to it. I appreciate that, Charles.
Yeah, and I would say that it's likely somewhere in between the two theories. We are certainly trying with the three-tier system here, the rehabilitation, the preservation and the replacement strategy. We definitely got to be somewhere in between.
Yeah, the challenge is we've got some in the green, we've got a lot in the yellow and a lot in the red too, so.
Correct. Okay, what is our current condition? So we talked a little bit about that number, the pavement index. I believe in December, we were at about a 53. Today, we're sitting at a 52. Why is that? Well, we just came through a winter cycle, pavement degrades, you're looking at an average of three per year. So we've come down just a bit and we're getting ready to kick off a bunch of programs. They will hit the street in the next couple of months. You've seen a couple in the last couple of councils. We'll go into more deep depth in a minute. But that number is certainly going to come up. Right now, we have active construction projects, 7.5 billion in preservation, 21 in rehabilitation and 13.8 in reconstruction. Our objectives are to develop these strategies that preserve our good pavement infrastructure. We definitely are trying to move all of that fair pavement into a good condition and then keep it there. If you go back to this slide here, we can make a lot more progress with our streets if we'll stay in the preservation zone. Once we get there, we stay there. Okay.
One question I always have on this, Charles, is, I know we've got a lot of funded but not expended projects, but is that the seven and the 21 and the 13?
I'm on, I've got a slide for you. We're coming up on our...
It's always like, I know we have a backed up PCI bounce in my mind.
That, that 13th street there is a zero PCI. Without disparaging our wonderful city, I feel like, does it go to negative? Because that doesn't actually look too bad, based on some of the streets that I've driven on and seen.
The scale is, is just from zero to 100.
So not all zero streets are the same.
Yeah, clearly. I could drive down that pretty smooth, it seems like.
Those are just examples on the left. We'll, we'll get into some, some more photos here and we'll name names with streets and locations and dates. Okay. So question about current condition, where are we at with the poor streets? So 38% of our streets, about 583 lane miles. If we look at the investment to fix that and move those from poor to good, that's about $2 billion. It's a pretty heavy lift. That would take about 50 years of, of the bonding capacity. All right, a little better. Fair condition streets, 19% of streets, 291 lane miles. About $400 million to move those streets from fair to good. We want to keep those streets from falling out of the fair condition into the poor condition because your cost goes from $92 to $420 a square yard to fix it. All right. Good. We want to keep good condition streets good, 43% of our streets, 660 lane miles, about $88 million in the next 10 years, 8.8 million a year on average, to keep good streets good. All right, now we do maintain all of this information for the public, bettestreetswaco.com. The QR code does work, I checked it. And it's, it will take you right to this, to this webpage. This gives everyone an idea of what's going on with our Better Streets Waco project program. I've got different colors to show, is it designed, under design, is it being planned for, is it under contract, is it in construction, is it completed? And it shows by council district. You can go to any of the street segments and you can learn more about your street segment. So when was the last time we touched it? How did we, what was the repair, et cetera, et cetera? A lot of good information on this website. Okay, let's talk about some successes in the last several years. I've got several examples from each council district here. Bridge Street Plaza, about .4 lane miles. Project cost $6.3 million, quite a dramatic change for the area. This is in Council District 1 and we've got some new businesses along this frontage here. There was, that's a pretty expensive cost per lane mile, but there was quite a bit of utility work and there was some extra, I guess...
So parked, park as well, right?
Yeah, it's a thorough fair street, a park, park street or...
Flare, I thought is what you were going to go with.
Yeah, street skate.
Street skate, maybe.
Street skate, thank you.
It's quite nice, money well spent.
Yeah.
Also in Council District 1, we had Elm Street, excuse me, Elm Avenue, 1.8 lane miles, $12.1 million, all new utilities, some new storm drain infrastructure, new lighting, landscaping, nice new sidewalks and lots of new pavement. And what you'll notice, that is a picture from this morning on the right-hand side. So staff is working hard to stay on top of these streets.
These are just the, these are just the street dollars because that's not other public works dollars? Or is it all together?
No, that's together for that project.
Because I was like, I know it's higher because, you know, when you measure twice but cut once and you find there's wood under there.
Yeah.
Uh huh. Interlocal railroad, so I was like, it's a little higher than what normal would be for that because we had to do a lot of...
Archaeology.
Man. I was going to lean into the Frankenstein of it all, but yes.
Every third day, there's a new headline in the paper about something they refined under there, man.
I know. But it's, it's great now.
It does. And staff is doing an excellent job of trying to stay up with that pavement and ensuring that the crack ceiling is done. You can have some crack ceiling after new construction as some of that subgrade material cracks. And they're trying to stay on top of that to make sure we keep these streets in good condition. We don't want water intrusion getting in to that subgrade and causing problems. 26th Street, Council District 2, 1.7 lane miles, about $5.4 million. This was completed a little, little while ago in '21. I think there's one of everything underneath this street. This, this street has an incredible amount of utility in it. And so it took quite a bit of effort to complete, but certainly a welcome addition and fixed all of the utilities. Dutton Avenue, similar. We had a lot of utility work here, 2.3 lane miles, Council District 2, about $3.4 million. Also in Council District 2, we've had the University Parks work. This was recently completed. Big change. Obviously, we brought the new Baylor facility there. We've got a city parking garage there, lots of new apartments and then a new roadway structure to accommodate all of those folks and those events. Big change. Mars Drive is in Council District 3. This was completed back in 2024, had great impact to businesses in Waco and the school district that was there.
And I appreciate on that project too. I know it's, not to get too sidetracked on each project, but there's a nice wide sidewalk where pedestrian and, and schoolchildren's safety was a big issue before. Appreciate all the good work there.
About $9 million on that one. Washington Avenue was a big change. We went from a one-way street to a two-way street, added bike lanes, lots of parking zones and striping. About 4.8 lane miles in Council District 4 for 4.1 million back in 2022. The big one, so the big dig for 5th Street, 4.7 lane miles, $9.6 million back in '23. This project lasted for a couple of years. Was a great impact, a lot of patience on local businesses and some of the residential areas that were impacted. We replaced utility, I think, I think there was some wood stuff in there too. So it was a big project and looks great now and certainly is being used daily for all the traffic that goes by my office. So we can, we can watch them fly down 5th Street.
George, did that change where you parked for a while?
Like two years.
I'm glad it's good now.
Another project that's completed recently, Council District 4, 0.7 lane miles of 18th Street. A lot of utility here to, and some utility work to accommodate some potential new development. Also some new bike lanes and some new sidewalks, Council District 4.
And to take Josh's point of not wanting to sidetrack all of these, this one is very welcome to the, the neighbors up and down along Sanger and Morrow on 18th Street there. Shortening the number of lanes and including a bike lane has certainly helped with some of the traffic issues they were experiencing there as well.
All right, moving to Council District 5. Back in '22, we did 13.6 lane miles for about $2 million. This is a rehabilitation project, so your money goes a lot further. Onto Airport Road, 3.3 lane miles, Council District 5, about $6 million completed in February 2024. Okay, let's move on to active projects. So we've talked about keeping good streets good. That's a preservation strategy. It's about $24 a square yard. If you don't, or if you don't elect to, to do preservation and you let that street degrade to where it needs to be rehabilitated, that jumps to $92 a square yard. Useful life for these types of projects is about eight to 13 years. And the projects are generally described as a crack ceiling or micro-surfacing or a thin overlay mix. It's important to note here, a little bit of the financing behind preservation. This is a cash item. And I think it's our goal to try to pay for preservation out of street funds. Right now, I think the street fund is bringing in about $2.5 million a year. So if you'll think back to that previous slide, we need about $8.8 million a year for the 10-year strategy. Now that's average over the 10 years. So proposed in fiscal year '25, '26, a dollar and 5 cent increase is going to bring in about another million six and try to move that percentage of street maintenance fund for the preservation portion of our street program from a 12% to a 19% covering that. I think a dollar increase would get you about 1.38 million in revenue instead of the 1.6. And adding additional monies here frees up some of the money that comes from the general fund. So this would be moving street preservation to street maintenance fee, sort of fund sourcing. Okay. What do these projects look like? We've got several out now. We, we brought a couple back to council. It looks like in April and May, about $7.5 million worth of ongoing preservation projects. It's important to note here that in the last few months, as I've gotten into the, the street program, we're trying to move some of these bids so that we get more competitive bids. I'd like to have the funding earlier so that we can be bidding in, either in the winter or early, early spring, so that we pick the contractors first, kind of weed out some of the competition and we can affect and start those programs earlier in the year than we have in the past. Be working with finance and the city manager's office to make that happen. All right, moving on to rehabilitation. This is again, $92 a yard or so. Hopefully it'll come down if, if prices of asphalt comes down. If you decide not to do a rehabilitation project, again, if you do let that pavement If you decide not to do a rehabilitation project, again, if you do let that pavement fail and go to reconstruction, it jumps up four times to four hundred and twenty dollars a square yard. Rehabilitation projects should increase your asset useful life approximately twenty years. Some examples, we've got Clay Avenue, this bid back in October of twenty-three, about seven point two million dollars for Council District One and Four. We are currently working on a portion of this project, we have recently, like in the last two weeks, found an issue with one of the utilities that we're working on, but hope to get that completed here soon, and it's probably gonna be the August, September period before we can complete this job. Aviation Parkway over in Council District One, I recently bid two point one million dollars. This rehab gets started here very soon and hopefully be finished by January. Herring Avenue in, in Council District Four, gonna bid here in June of twenty-five, or advertise in June of twenty-five, about four point five million dollars. Cobb's Drive Rehabilitation, bid back in September, contractor bid for three point six million dollars, should finish that here early fall twenty-twenty-five. All right, Reconstruction, Heavy Lift, four hundred and twenty dollars a square yard, most expensive, twenty-plus year life. Here are three streets with names and dates, so James back in twenty-four, seven, excuse me, Seventeenth back in twenty-twenty-four, and Bagby Avenue back in twenty-twenty-four. Just real quick, Bagby Avenue, about ten point six million dollars, this is Bagby from, I think, Kendrick to Valley Mills, and we've got some concrete section in here, some asphalt section. I know that this project ran into some challenges with some of the utility work and had some delays, but we're, we're finished with that, moving on to pavement, so moving forward. James Avenue, we should be doing a walkthrough here very soon, Council District One and, and Two, three point seven million dollars. This one was a challenge, we had some businesses and several Baylor student residential units in the area, and so when you look at the left picture, you see that you tear out driveways and it makes access challenging, so we had to work, we had to work with several of those units to get them twenty-four hour access. You can't always do that, sometimes we have to make other accommodations. All right, upcoming, Chapel Road Widening, I know this one has been on the books for a little bit, Council District Three, nine point three million dollars, gonna advertise here in twenty-twenty-five. Have a picture on the left, and proof that we do outreach meetings, we, we like to get out in the public and talk about these projects, so we got a city staff in the right picture there, talking with residents.
Excited for this one too, given the conversion of the old Woodgate to Chapel Park Elementary, I think this will be a lot safer for our schoolchildren that walk in that corridor to that school and utilize our park right there as well.
Okay. So Mayor, this slide was specifically your slide, what is Charles' list up to these days? And how are we breaking down the projects? So kind of a summary of what the programming looks like, and we look here in this first category, about eight million dollars of recently awarded, started construction. So you can look at the council dates and the projects and the pricing. Expected advertisement in June, July, and August. So we've been working hard to accelerate several projects and bring those projects forward here this summer. All in all, it's about fifty-one million dollars worth of street work. I know the one on here that is very important is the downtown quiet zone, we are still working with the railroad and the consultant, we have run into a few other utilities that we have found that are gonna have to move, but still on, not on schedule, but still anticipated on happening here this twenty-twenty-five. On the right-hand side in the green is a balance of monies that are available to me on the street program, and what's bonded and what's cashed and what's unencumbered. So pre-two thousand twenty-five bond money that's unencumbered is about twenty-nine point eight million dollars. The two thousand twenty-five bond that is coming in for me, all in, is about forty-five million dollars for a total of seventy-five million dollars. In cash, I have spent all the prior cash, and street maintenance, this number, we're still working with finance to flesh out the exact number, but it's about eight million dollars, might be seven to eight million dollars. Two thousand twenty-five cash unencumbered that has just come to us, about nine point six million dollars. So you add all that in, about ninety-three million dollars total. You subtract out the programmed projects, fifty-one million, now keep in mind, dollars, cost increases, cost decline, this is just an estimate at this, at this point, about forty-two million dollars remain. That forty-two million dollars then is then broken out to the next set of projects as in the below right chart. So preservation, rehab, reconstruction, those dollars, and targeting bid dates for those packages, and then not really discussed in this, but included, and, excuse me, in this presentation, but included in those numbers above are bridge maintenance, bridge reconstruction, traffic signals, grant programs. So when you talk about the two thousand twenty-five bond CIP unencumbered, forty-five million includes those dollars, and so I just added that this to balance it out even though that those are not specifically for streets. So this is kind of the roadmap and where Charles is at on the, on the street work side.
Um, quick question, Charles. In the remaining balance that's down in the bottom right, for the, is, and I'm quite sure the answer is yes, and it may be, you know, therefore, Tim, we'll hear more about that Friday chill, but is there a plan specifically for like the rehabilitation dollars? I know we had talked about a specific way to do, um, street maintenance that would, watch me use my words, provide a balanced delivery throughout the districts? Is there, is that kind of the direction that you wanted to go with or no?
So the forty-two point three million dollars that is shown, carried from the top to the bottom then is distributed amongst the different programs that are upcoming, so I expect to spend that forty-two million dollars here by the dates that are listed, and those are the categories. So it's remaining at the moment because we haven't started all of those programs yet, but I expect to get those out with staff. Now, as far as how they're programmed, we utilize the, we utilize the computer program to tell us the condition of the existing streets.
Oh, yeah.
And in the December presentation, I talked about putting my thumb on moving as many of those dollars as I could to residential, local streets, and that still is the plan.
Would you, Council, would you prefer, as we get more meat on the bone with that forty-two million, maybe a follow-up work session, kind of show the, show how that, putting the thumb on it, where does that end up being? What streets are we doing?
I know, you know, when, when you go back to the previous, the, and don't go back, but the slides that break down, you know, which districts have the numbers of the greater number of poor streets, I understand that it is going to take much more work, much, and, and many more dollars. However, if we, you know, we, we, I think we as a council decided that it would be easier and more palatable for our residents to be like, you know, hey, twenty-five is not your year, but we've slated that we're doing more intentional work in twenty-six or twenty-seven or whatever at all with the districts, because again, two billion dollars is what we have to have to fix it all, and that's not gonna happen. But, you know, the streets that people remember are the one that they back in and out of every day. So I was trying to see if the plan that we originated was where we were. Now, I get how we rationalize and do that, and we have to break down, and there are areas that you want to start with because of whatever insert reason here, but does that still go with if I go to my neighborhood association meeting and they ask me, Andrea, why are these streets this raggedy? I have an answer. So that's kind of just, I don't go back to the slides.
I gotta go back to the slide.
And raggedy generally falls under poor, right?
Yeah. See, poor.
So, so staff has updated the map and shown exactly which streets are under consideration, so if you look at the orange color, we go into detail on what that first blush or brush is, when the program spits out, okay, it's time for this segment to be done, then of course, that needs to be analyzed to see, what's the utility impact? What's the ADA impact? What are the other costs? Is this feasible in accordance with the dollars that are available? And I believe that we had discussed, I'm gonna have to go back further.
See. Don't go back.
Right here, that my plan was District Two and District Four, and looking at those neighborhood streets, so that, that still is in play, that hasn't changed. Now, we're also just, okay, I'm gonna go forward now.
Listen.
Just for you, in, okay, in the bottom right-hand corner, we haven't got to that, for those funds that still remain, we haven't got to that level of detail yet, and I think that's what City Manager Ford is saying, hey, bring that forward, and we will do that.
You have something to say, Paul?
I was just gonna add, I think as you look at the forty-two million, and you'll hear it on the next few slides, we're gonna talk about moving all of the fair to good. I think the way to think about it is, all of the, the dollars that you see in the green, forty-two million, related to streets, those, so the twenty-five and the nine fifty and the six, those are all, if council agrees, we will dedicate those dollars towards the plan to shift all citywide streets up to good condition, sixty-seven percent of those streets up to good condition. So the forty-two million would be spent in accordance with that plan. Individually within council districts, it goes back to the, one of the first slides that Charles showed, in certain council districts where you have a significant number of poor streets, those would continue to be poor.
Mm-hmm.
But all of the fair and good within each district would be in good condition. So that's the strategy overall, and the monies that you see in the bottom right of the slide would be used to achieve that sixty-seven percent over ten years. If council agrees, that's where we're going, and Charles is gonna get into that in some detail here in a second.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to future funding, remember, this excludes bridges, signals, sidewalks, et cetera. So this is a slide that we shared back in December and talked about getting to that sixty-seven percent or thereabout, good condition within ten years. And so we've got street preservation, and again, we're trying to utilize the street maintenance fee to make that happen, but in two thousand twenty-five, you're at six, six point seven million dollars, and I think the escalator is about four percent, so you're taking that up four percent, and by the time you're at twenty thirty-five, you're at nine point six million dollars, and that average was about eight million dollars, eight point eight million dollars a year or so. Debt issuance to fair to good with this, we talked about that being an initial investment of thirty million dollars annually, and then an inflation of four percent. That's about a three hundred and seventy-five million dollar investment over ten years. And we had also talked in December about trying to do a three million dollar port to good classification, and still recommend to do that, and that would be a thirty-six million dollar investment. And we show in this chart, in year zero, starting out at about forty-three percent, and in year ten, ending up at about sixty-seven percent. That's the investment to take the fair streets and move them to good, so in year zero, you see the number of fair streets, and by year ten, you've exhausted most ninety-nine percent of your fair streets, and you've converted those to good streets.
Councilmember Bearfield, this is Paul in the back, the, the red line that you see there is designed around this, the concept you're speaking of earlier, and where perhaps we can target those dollars in specific districts where you have a higher percentage of poor streets, in full recognition that we'll never get to the one point nine billion dollars, but perhaps a way to address some of those while keeping the overall plan of shifting every, shifting to sixty-seven percent over ten years. So that's, that's where you might see that those dollars we were talking about earlier.
Now, the chart, on the right-hand side, year zero, starting today, forty-three percent good, trying to move to sixty-seven percent good, poor, dropping from thirty-eight to thirty-two, and that's, it's a little bit different than the bar chart, and that's with and without that port to good investment. So on the, on the left in your chart, you see a flat line, and there's not that three million dollar assessment every year, plus inflation, and then on the right, it's showing if you did have that investment, you're gonna break some of those poor streets down over time and, and improve your percentage from thirty-eight to thirty-two percent. Okay, here is a chart showing those investments annually for ten years in comparison to debt capacity. So capacity, three hundred and seventy-five million dollars, effort to change fair streets to good, about three hundred and seventy-five million dollars, and that port to good, an additional thirty-six million dollars.
Council, I know you intuitively, you're gonna recognize this, maybe the public wouldn't, the black line being that tax-supported capacity for debt, over the years, we've traditionally used that for streets, for sure, predominantly, but this is also how we build parks and repair city facilities often, or even build fire stations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So what, what you're seeing here is our estimation of debt service in that black line will pretty much be entirely eaten up by the fair to good strategy. We'll need additional dollars for the poor to good, and then even more dollars for if you want to build or relocate fire stations, or you want to build a new park, or et cetera. So I think y'all recognize this, because you're intuitively around this all the time, but I wanted to cover that for the public.
Only real way to, well, I'm asking, this is not a statement, it's a question. The only real way for us to do that is to consider issuing, or going to the voters for a bond, or something of that nature. I know that I was looking at another city and they just did, they put their entire city streets into a bond, and I mean, I know that, that, that we have not done that in a while, but I think looking at, if we're really looking at how we will make an impact on what this looks like, we, I don't know that we can take that off the table, because there's no, there's no short-term way to look at resolving this issue.
Definitely on, on Friday, we intend to show you, or work you through an exercise that talks about four to five strategies to make this black line higher, one of which is definitely going to the voters and seeking a tax rate increase for enhanced amount of interest and sinking fund debt, increase in debt, one of the five. And so we're seeking, and today, we're trying to lay the groundwork, here's where we are, dollars and cents, and Friday, we're gonna seek your input of, you know, do any of these five strategies make sense, or some version of a combination of the five make sense? But definitely, that's one of them that's on our minds.
And if I might jump in here, this slide really is the, the gap, the differences between, if you don't mind backing up one, Charles, just for a second.
Sure.
So you see that the, the capacity line that Bradley was speaking of fluctuates up and down based on debt that's retired, our annual debt service obligations from previously issued. based on debt that's retired, our annual debt service obligations from previously issued debts. And the, the numbers that Charles spoke about earlier on getting to sixty-seven percent is, are fairly consistent based on a four percent overall growth pattern. And then on the next slide, if you don't mind, Charles, you see, these are the differences between the gap. And so as we move into the ultimate plan that council's going to approve, we'll adjust to flatten these, these out so that we stay with, within the annual amount, of course, to make sure that, that we're consistent and equivalent to our debt capacity for each year. So that means we'll have to shift some dollars from year to year throughout the program to make that happen. But this gives you some sense of where we are overall, and, you know, that ten-year total. If we funded both the yellow and red on the previous slide, it puts us about thirty-five million dollars over, which is about the same cost as the poor to good condition component of the plan. So again, as Bradley pointed out, to get to that sixty-seven percent number, shifting all of fair to good consumes all of our debt capacity for the next ten years.
Just right, quick, we talked about this more on Friday, but the debt capacity, was that just assuming a three percent growth rate and a four percent coupon, or how did we?
It's, it's a, it's a four-year, and on that debt capacity, we, we do take a very conservative approach of four percent growth in the taxable assessed valuation, twenty-year level debt.
What, what interest rate?
The, the interest rate.
It'll be three or four somewhere.
It floats in that four percent, but.
Got it.
And there is some shifting, Mayor, in that, that model of debt capacity, shifting from operations to debt, the tax rate that we've been doing for the last few years. I think that would continue.
So you're moving, you're moving more M and O at INS?
Yes, sir.
Past the eighty-twenty?
Uh, no, up to the eighty-twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, gets us to that point. So I think it's maybe five years or so in the plan.
Got it.
Okay, takeaways and conclusions. With council support and the city manager's office support, for sure, we have moved the needle on good streets in the last five years. About fifty-seven million dollar average annual funding. And if you'll recall, in one of those opening slides, many slides ago, that's about three point seven times what we were doing in two thousand and fifteen. Overall, citywide PCI average score is up ten points since this, since this started. And the average improvement in good condition for all districts since fiscal year two thousand and nineteen is up two hundred and twelve percent. Most cost-effective way for us to improve all of the street conditions is keeping good streets in good condition and moving fair streets to good condition. All right, current council direction. We have moved or would like to move today's forty-three percent to sixty-seven percent over the next ten years. That is, move fair streets to good streets and a few of the poor streets to good streets. That's an eighty-eight million dollar investment in the preservation, about eight point eight million a year, and about a four hundred million dollar investment through bonding and moving those fair streets to a good condition. This leaves little bonding capacity for other projects that we've talked about, some of those bridges, sidewalks, signals, parks, fire stations. And looking for some feedback, are we on the right track?
Too many slides? Slide fatigue.
Is that rhetorical?
No. I was like, pause for dramatics. We, we are on the right track. I mean, we, we set out a goal to, to try to find a way to manage this and this, this unmanageable thing, you know? Because I remember, even before I got on council, I went to a presentation, and I think the amount of money that we spent in twen, it, it, that two thousand and fifteen slide was, was spot on, and it's, we intentionally put, you know, double and triple and quadruple the amount of dollars into the streets program over time. So, you know, yes, are we, are we doing the right thing? Yep, absolutely, great job. How do we do the most effective way and the most fiscally sound way to continue progress on something that is every day getting worse? It, it's kind of insurmountable to think about it because this is something, how do you, how do you project to fix something that is declining? So we look forward to Friday, kind of breaking it down to see what it is. Because it's not like we can, yes, let's focus on streets, eh, you don't need any more parks. Ah, sidewalks are, we can't do that. So we have to figure out what it is to, okay, yes, and? Yes, or? Or yes, when? See, I added a new one. But, you know, I think that, that we just continue to press on and figure out, you know, what, what is a way that addresses these issues that doesn't take away from future growth? Because those are still some areas that you have to consider. We've got new neighborhoods coming online, and I mean, they need a street or two. And so we've got to figure those out as well. So I'm, I look forward to what the mayor has planned for this to fix it.
Yeah, I agree that, I think we're on the right path. Because it did seem like we inherited a street program that would maybe like worked for tips, I guess, or, you know, was definitely underfunded. I don't know if it was more of a, just like it was set up on a nonprofit basis or, but it was heavily, or it was not heavily invested in. But I, I do, I do think the number, the most vexing part of the analysis, I think, is the poor streets. Because most of the, my read on that is most of them are in the core, most of them are residential streets. So they're the people's streets that, that residences are on. And it seems like we've done a good job of like the arterial, the thoroughfare, and coordinating with text out on the things that are adjacent to text out, improved and maintain roads. But yeah, it, it is, yeah, I don't, I know none of us have the capacity for getting two billion dollars, you know, cobbled together to get everything to an ideal road system. But I do think we've made great strides, and I think that's something that we hear from our residents a lot, is the importance of our streets. And I think this council over the last ten years, and our city management, has tried to be very responsive to that concern. But I do think it, it's hard when you're up against, like you said, forty years of, of doing the deferred maintenance option, which is the situation we are, are trying to dig ourselves out of now. So I'm grateful for the good work that our Public Works Department has done, and our city manager and our city council have done on this. And I, I don't think there's a silver bullet with this, but I, I know that it seems like our council's got consensus on keep funding, you know, the streets program to improve our streets, and that we have seen those metrics improve, especially the fair. You know, we, we've improved a lot of fair streets to, to good and kept a lot of good streets good that have moved into that column. So I think in that regard, our city's done a great job with this. But there's still obviously a lot of work to, to be done, especially in the core.
I agree with that sentiment.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? I'll just wrap it up. I say, Charles, this is great, I love the science you're bringing to this. This is a great, I've been in here eight, nine years now, and best presentation I've seen on the science of it, the, how, how it deteriorates and the cost, and the, you, you've done a great job here. Because our job is to, you know, you brought up, we have two point three billion. We want to fix it all at once, as, as Mayor Protem mentioned. And we've got, we're stretching fifty to sixty million a year, and we run into debt capacity issues really quickly, particularly if we're doing the other things that we need to be doing with our COs. So it's, it's definitely a challenge to prioritize it and to figure out which, which streets go where. And the fact that we've made this pretty decent progress, I like the, if you tell the good story. But there's still, we still have issues, and I appreciate your attack. It's, it's, it's great. And on top of that, we have increasing costs, you know? That the plan that we put together eight, nine years ago when I got on with that was kind of using constant dollars, and those dollars are half as powerful as they were back then because costs have doubled. So it's just stretched our ten-year plan out into twenty at least. So yeah, I like the planning, and we've got a great framework here to kind of nail some things down here in the next steps of the budget cycle. So great, great job, Charles. Any other questions or comments? Charles, thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to City Manager Ford, and where, where are we at?
We are headed for a break and executive session. We're going to delay the third, the last presentation that was listed on your agenda is going to get moved to a future agenda. We appreciate Cindy Decker and Hannah Anderson rescheduling for us, and appreciate that flexibility. We'll have them on a later agenda for you. So I'm ready for, for a break and heading to executive session, I believe.
Great, we'll first ask if there are any future agenda items that the council would like to discuss. There are none, so we will now recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by Endrum Assistant City Secretary Spikes at five twenty-five P M.
Notice is here by given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Real Properties Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point zero seven two, and Economic Development Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five five one point zero eight seven. We are now in executive session.